The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask all of you to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Tonight, we're going to begin with a couple of presentations, and I'm going to do the first one for Veterans Day. Tonight, I'm very proud to be here to do the proclamation for Veterans Day, which was Saturday. On Saturday, we had an event here at the town hall at 11 o'clock where we honored the veterans out front. They actually have a little program, and it was a wreath that's placed in front of the monument in front of the town hall. And they have an actual program there with flags and a court, the Court of Honor type of thing, out in front of the town hall. And at night, they had a dinner. And at the dinner, I presented them with the proclamation. It was very well attended and in a very special evening. They had someone who came who was a Vietnam vet who actually spoke, was a speaker at the dinner, and it was very nice and well-attended. The dinner was very well-attended, and it was very special event for the veterans and the community. I also wanted to mention that out this year on the monument that's out front, there's a new name, and it's Eric Palawato. And he was an Iraqi in the Army in Iraq, and that is a name that was just, it's a new name on the monument. What's so special about the monument is it's people that were here, that were in Unionville and Farmington, that were citizens here, that had passed all the way from goodness, 1647, I think it begins, and right to the current day. So it's quite a beautiful monument to honor all of the veterans for many, many years. If you haven't seen it, please take a look. I'd like to read the presentation, the proclamation that I read on Saturday night, and just say that it's really a special day to honor the veterans, and it's special to me as well. My dad was in the Navy, my father-in-law was in the Air Force, and I have a brother-in-law in the Air Force, and my husband is a Vietnam vet. So it's special, and I think it's a great day and a great time to honor the vets. But I think tonight, as Amy will do in a few minutes, we have quite an honor tonight with three Boy Scouts becoming Eagle Scouts, so that's something we look forward to. But the proclamation reads, "Whereas the citizens of our country are justly proud of the men and women who have fought to defend the principles of liberty and freedom on which our nation was founded, and whereas from the revolutionary era militias through today's sophisticated defense structure, American service members have defended our country in times of challenge, brought honor to the United States, and created a solid foundation for its continued security, growth, and prosperity. And whereas despite the tremendous perils and pressures of wartime, our armed forces have defended the country with conviction and courage. In admiration of the strength of our convictions, other nations have looked to America for leadership, and our allies have always been secure in the knowledge that our proud country will not allow its principles and beliefs to be compromised. And whereas the citizens of the United States will forever owe an immense debt of gratitude to our veterans for the sacrifices they've made to secure the safety of our country. And whereas as an expression of that gratitude, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an act calling for the observance of Veterans Day on November 11th of each year. And in 1921, that date was originally designated as Armistice Day in remembrance of the end of World War I and as a perpetual reminder of the blessings of peace. And by 1954, the observance widened to honor the courageous veterans of all foreign conflicts. And whereas our veterans reflect the preeminent qualities of patriotism and courage in all of us and continue to make countless contributions to military and the civilian life. In addition, many men and women from the Connecticut National Guard are serving all around the world or are scheduled to be deployed there shortly, along with many other Connecticut residents, serving with the United States Army, the Air Force, the Navy, the Marines, and the Coast Guard. Now therefore be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby thanks the many contributions and accomplishments of all of our veterans. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the 14th day of November 2017, Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Town Council." Thank you.
On November 5th, we had at the community center in town, a Court of Honor for three outstanding young men, Stuart Buzzden, Christopher Moreno, and Dylan Suffardini, who happens to be related to me, yes. Usually before I do the presentations here and at the Court of Honor, I need to do a little research about the young men. I'll talk to the Scout leaders, I'll talk to other Scouts, just to try to understand who they are. As I said at the Court of Honor the other day, there was no research necessary. These three men, our young men, have spent a lot of time in the back of my car over the years to go into crew regattas and finance meetings and economic competitions and the many, many Scout events, which often it was my husband doing the driving, but there were many of them. And I watched these little kids grow up into really impressive young men. And I also watched these boys who knew each other turn it out to be like the closest of friends. And that's the one thing that, I don't think I've ever talked about in Scouts before here, but that really stands out to me. We talk about the contribution to the town, which is amazing. We talk about who they are, but we don't talk about what the Scout community does for these kids. It brings them these relationships that they have for the rest of their lives, and it's just one of the many benefits of Boy Scouts. And Troop 68, what we're talking about tonight, both troops have just done so much for the As a Scout mom, I know the 12 points of Scout Law, but I don't have it memorized like all of you, you could probably tell me right now. A Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And I have to say, knowing these three the way I do, they're perfect examples of all of these things. And I, as a parent and as a friend of all of these kids, couldn't be more proud. So first, Stuart, come on up. He had to deal with this last weekend, so he has to deal with it again. One of the reasons you're here, Stuart, and Chris and Dylan, is so we, the Town Council, can thank you. You have completed an outstanding Eagle project, and you did that for our town, and we want the opportunity to say thank you for all of your time. You've also done tons and tons of hours of volunteer work for the town of Farmington. And this is our way of saying thank you for your time, and especially what you've done is going to stick on way beyond you going off to college. What Stuart did as his Eagle project is he and a group of volunteers that he organized spent 500 hours monitoring vernal pools at Winding Trail, built a kiosk, and installed codes that link to a computer so people can learn more about the organisms. I always like to also point out a little bit about what they're doing outside of Scouts, because it's amazing to me. When I was their age, there was no way I could fill my time and do so much. Stuart is a top, top Honor student. He's a junior. Next year, he'll be going through the whole college process. He's a varsity coxswain. He is the vice president of the economics team, and I'm giving you credit, a vice president of finance team, because you do all the work at finance team. He's a viola player, and he's a member of the Honor Society. He volunteers at the New Britain Boys and Girls Club, and he's an altar boy at St. Pat's. So it's pretty impressive. So now you get the proclamation. Usually at the Court of Honors, I read them and then take them away from these poor guys. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America help train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, whereas many of the youth participate in activities of the Boy Scouts of America which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of Boy Scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Stuart Buzzden from Troop 68, Boy Scouts of America, recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout. Whereas for his project titled "Identifying Organisms in Vernal Pools," Stuart Buzzden monitored pools for two seasons at Winding Trail's property, built a kiosk about vernal pools, and created QR codes that link to a website providing information about organisms living in each pool. Whereas Stuart Buzzden is a member of the Farmington High School Crew Team, Finance Club, Economics Team, and Orchestra. And whereas Stuart Buzzden is an exceptional scholar, as he was the finalist at the National Science Bowl and is a recipient of the Dr. Bernard Harris Supernova Award. And whereas as a result of Stuart Buzzden's work, the lives of the people of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced, and we say thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend to Stuart Buzzden our best wishes and hereby proclaim November 7th, 2017, as Stuart Buzzden Day in Farmington. Nancy W. Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Town Council. Rightly. (applause). And Lauren and Robert need to come up, because none of this happens without, it's a family project, it's a parent project, it's a community project, and these two people have been beyond outstanding.
So you don't get a proclamation, but you get a hat. So would you like a pink?
Pink.
Maroon.
It's maroon.
Maroon.
Would you like a hat? And would you like, oh, no one will pick up. And you get one too.
Maroon and gray.
Yes, yes.
There you go. And there you go. And congratulations to all of you. Here. (applause). You're welcome. All right, Chris. How are you? I've known Chris since he was in third grade. For the Court of Honor, we had a slideshow that Jane put together, Chris's mom, that had at least 150, 200 pictures. And you see pictures of Chris and my son Dylan in third grade. Chris was a foot taller than him too, but we've had Chris around for a long time. At the Court of Honor, what I said was, we talked about the 12 points, and I also said that when I think of Chris, the word that always jumps to mind is kind. He is, from the young kid to the elder in the room to everyone in between, it's pure kindness, and it's a humble kindness that really is impressive. And that, I said at Court of Honor, that it doesn't surprise me that he is now, he was voted the captain of his swim team and crew team, because people cheer for him and they want him to succeed, so. And this is a pretty successful thing. All right, Chris. You get the proclamation too. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America help train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Boy Scouts of America which benefit our community, whereas one crowning achievement of Boy Scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Christopher Moreno from Troop 68, Boy Scouts of America, recently completed the requirements of Eagle Scout. His project, which I need to say thank you for also, benefited the Farmington Land Trust by building a bird blind and installing additional bird houses to enhance the bird-watching experience for visitors at the Cary pasture on Mountain Spring Road. First of all, it's an outstanding thing, and I recommend everyone to go there. Second of all, Chris did not benefit from good weather. Every time he had a day, it rained, and I believe everyone was covered in mud throughout the whole process, but he persevered, and he finished it by his 18th birthday, so good job. Whereas Christopher Moreno has demonstrated leadership through his participation of the Farmington High School Boys Crew Team and Swim Team, and was named co-captain for both teams this senior year. Whereas as a result of Christopher Moreno's work, the lives of the people of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend to Christopher Moreno our best wishes and hereby proclaim November 5th, 2017, as Christopher Moreno Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Signed, Nancy W. Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Council. (applause). Again, this doesn't happen, not only does the Eagle project happen without Mom and Dad or the Court of Honor, but from the beginning, it's a group-family effort. So congratulations to all of you. And what color hat would you like? Hat? You all got a hat? All three maroons. Family of maroons. All right. Excellent. Thank you, and congratulations. There you go. Good. Congratulations. Good job. (applause). So the very final proclamation after three terms of proclamations that I get to do is my son, who, I don't know if he's looking forward to his mom doing it or not, but I might have Dylan. This is Dylan, for those of you who don't know Dylan. It's a little quirky doing this for you. I've known this one the longest. I've known this one the longest.
17 years.
17 years, yeah. Dylan could tell you, for his Eagle project, he did a fitness trail along the Farmington River. It's a 10-station fitness trail, I believe, what, 32 volunteers?
Yep.
How much concrete?
4,000 pounds.
Right. 200 and some odd hours was a lot of work, but I think it was a great learning experience, would you say? And he had everyone help him. He had cousins coming from all different places, everyone in the crew team, everyone in the Boy Scout team. It was a group effort, and I think he's pretty proud when he goes on the Farmington River, right, and sees it. Anyway, it's hard to talk about what you do, so I'm just going to read the proclamation.
Sounds good.
All right. You ready? You want to read it?
No.
Okay. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America help train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, whereas many of the youth participate in activities of the Boy Scouts of America which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of Boy Scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Dylan Suffardini from Troop 68, Boy Scouts of America, recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout. Whereas Dylan's project included the design, planning, construction of a 10-station fitness trail along the Farmington River, which required 32 volunteers and 435 volunteer hours. I was off by about 200, huh? Whereas Dylan Suffardini has demonstrated leadership at Farmington High School, serving as the captain of his debate team, president of the economics club, president of the Model UN club, founder of the political action group that held the debate for the Town Council Chair, and participates in wind ensemble, jazz band, and marching band. Whereas Dylan Suffardini has displayed a dedication to public service through his involvement in the Democratic campaigns on local, state, and national levels, and is currently completing a research project for U.S. Senator Chris Murphy on the positive impact of refugees in Connecticut. And whereas as a result of Dylan Suffardini's work, the lives of the people of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend to Dylan Suffardini our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim November 6th, 2017, as Dylan Suffardini Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Nancy W. Nickerson, Chair of the Town Council. And Brian Suffardini, come on up. (applause). Congratulations. You want a hat? I know what color he's going.
He already has a room.
You need to pick one? How about you?
I don't care.
You've got to make a big decision. You going for the maroon? Congratulations.
(applause).
Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy. And congratulations to all of you and your families, your parents. I know it takes all of you to get there, so you should be very proud.
I feel like I should get a hat.
Amy, you get a hat.
Do I get a hat? I don't know what color. It's so stressed. I think I'm going for the...
Take two.
You want one here? Pass it on.
Okay. We do not have five, so we're moving on. Public hearing, none. New items? None? Public comment. At this time, I would ask anyone who would like to address the council to come up and give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to talk.
Last time, last meeting, oh, sorry, Amanda Strauss, 16 Townsend Road. Last meeting, there were, I checked the notes that were accepted, and the notes pertaining to what I said were slightly inaccurate. I called the Town Manager's Office, and they said that I have to fix them here tonight by coming up and making a statement. So, ridiculous as this is, here we go. In the beginning, everything is pretty accurate, except for the part where it says that "I was concerned about the purchase of the streetlights. I told the council that the proposed lights were unhealthy for the eyes." And so that one section is incorrect. What I said was that the 3,000 calvins of the streetlights cause excessive glare, and for people who wear glasses, and especially for people with cataracts or Lasix, that that could be a problem and might cause traffic accidents. That's the gist of what I said. So if only that one part could be amended, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have that.
Right. Just for clarification, that came from the Town Clerk's office. I don't take notes.
Okay. Yeah, the Town Clerk takes the notes, so that's fine. And we have that tonight with Erica. That'll be taken care of. Thank you. Other town, other public comments.
Good evening. My name is Mike D'Amico, 6 Debra Lane, also the state representative from 21st District. I will try to be brief. First of all, I just wanted to echo the congratulations that have already been given to Stuart and Chris and Dylan for their Eagle Scout awards. I was fortunate enough to attend their ceremony a week ago, Sunday, and it was a great ceremony, and certainly well-deserving and hard-working young men, and the whole town should be proud of them, as I am and as all of us are. And the second thing I would like to do is congratulate Nancy Nickerson and John Landry for their reelection to the Town Council. Congratulations are certainly in order, and we've always worked well together, and I expect that we will continue to do so. So congrats, and nice job. However, not to be outdone, I would also like to mention the five members of the current council who will no longer be on the council starting in January, Amy, John, Meredith, Gary, and Peter. You have all worked diligently and faithfully for the town, and as a former council member myself, I know what a hard job it is, and it's sometimes a thankless job, but I am here to say thank you, because for myself, and I'm sure people around town will be thanking you as well, or they should, because you've really served the town well, and you deserve kudos for the job that you've done for all of us. So thanks, really. I mean it sincerely. But that's not why I'm here, as you can imagine. That's one of the reasons why I'm here, but the main reason I'm here, I want to talk really briefly about the recently adopted state budget and how it affects Farmington. In Kathy's Town Manager Report, she has a very good summary of what happened. I would just like to emphasize a couple of things. Overall, the town of Farmington, the grant money that's going to come to the town of Farmington is going to be reduced by about 5%, which sounds like, oh, that's not so good. But considering that the town budgeted for an approximate 30% reduction based on some real uncertainty at the state level, a 5% reduction is pretty darn good, I think. So I think we made out pretty well. And that's a 5% reduction overall in town grant money, and it's approximately a 5% reduction in ECS money, education cost-sharing money, which obviously is important to the town as well. As all of you remember, back in February, I was here along with the other members of the Farmington Legislative Delegation, and you all emphasized to us that we had to work hard to make sure that our grant money did not get reduced to any significant degree, that the ECS money didn't get reduced, that the idea of putting the teacher pension liability onto the towns, Farmington and all the other towns, was not a good idea. And you also emphasized that the car tax should not be eliminated, since it brings in a significant amount of revenue to Farmington as well as many other towns. I am happy to report that as a result of this agonizing budget process, the grants for Farmington were reduced by about 5%, that the teacher retirement pension money did not get pushed onto the towns, and that the car tax was not eliminated. So, you know, we listened. All of your arguments made good sense, and I just want to say, on behalf of my colleagues, Derek Slapp, Representative Slapp, Senator Beth By, Senator Terry Giratana, we work really well together. We always have Farmington's interests at heart, and, you know, I think you're lucky, we're lucky, that we do have such a good working relationship, and that we're able to press the case for Farmington and make sure that we made out okay. So, just to put it in perspective, there were proposals on the table that would have eliminated ECS money completely. There were proposals on the table that would have resulted in a 59% reduction, as Kathy and Nancy well know, because we had a good, long conversation about it. So we did not get reduced by 59%. We got reduced by 5%. So that's a pretty good win for the town. The only other thing that I just wanted to mention, we made some structural changes as well, which, you know, we can talk about at some later date. I don't want to belabor the whole thing. But, you know, I think ultimately, the reason why this budget took so long to get finally resolved is there was, you know, a push back and forth between the legislature and the executive branch as to how much responsibility was going to get shifted onto the towns. And the legislators, not just me, but all the legislators, really fought back and said, "Look, we can't push the state's responsibilities onto the towns. It's only going to result in property tax increases for every town, and that's not good for anybody." So, you know, when people ask, "Why did it take so long?", it's because we had a basic disagreement about how this was going to get accomplished. And, you know, it took a while, but I think on balance, it wasn't a perfect budget. Nobody's completely happy. I'm not completely happy. No one's completely happy, but on balance, I think we made out pretty well, and I think most towns made out pretty well. So I will stop there, but, you know, if you have any questions, or, you know, we can talk offline, or we can talk tonight, whatever you want to do. But I just wanted to give you that quick update. So thank you. And thank you for all of your input, because your input contributed to what we did up there at the Capitol. So thanks.
Thank you. Other public comment. Okay. Next on the agenda, reading of the minutes.
Point of clarification, should I move the minutes as amended by Ms. Strauss, or should I move them as they're written?
I would, I think you should move them as written, and then I think there'll be a clarification in the next seven minutes.
Okay. All right, thanks. In that case, I move to accept the minutes of the October 11th, 2017, regular Town Council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or corrections? John?
So this clarification, will it be noted in these minutes that there's a clarification in the following minutes?
Since the Town Clerk is not here, I am not the Town Clerk, so I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work, but I'm sure Paula will clean it all up if we've done it wrong.
Okay. Yeah, I just would suggest...
Or maybe table the minutes, or you can do that and take it on at the next meeting?
I just would hate for somebody to go back in the archives, pull up the minutes, and not know that they were incorrect.
That's a good point.
All right, so I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. H. Communications, Kathy.
You just have two pieces of communication in the packet. One was a letter to our state representatives, just talking about supporting the budget, the latest budget, which they did do, which Representative D'Amico just talked about. And the second is two nice letters that Ruth Groby had written about Chief Rich Higley from Tunxus Ho's and our surveyor, Rob, in the engineering department, about some help that they gave the human relations...
Communications, Kathy.
You just have two pieces of communication in the packet. One was a letter to our state representatives, just talking about supporting the budget, the latest budget, which they did do, which Representative D'Amico just talked about. And the second is two nice letters that Ruth Groby had written about Chief Rich Higley from Tunksis Hoes and our surveyor, Rob, in the engineering department, about some help that they gave the Human Relations Commission and Ruth Groby during the carnival. I was, I was nice to send us correspondence on that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, report of committees. First, the Yukon Health. We had a Yukon Health meeting on November 3rd, and a couple of things, just the highlights, I'll give you the highlights of the meeting. One was that Yukon informed the committee that the budget was, that was recently signed by Governor Malloy, or is close to what they had anticipated. So their budget, they feel, is going to be pretty much what they expected. Also, Yukon Health's current fiscal year budget is poised to end June 30th, 2018, with an operating deficit of 18.4. So, they are going to go back to balance the books with operating funds intended for capital replacement improvements, leaving very little funds for their capital for the fiscal year. We are going to, the other thing we did was set up meetings, which we have, we usually meet quarterly with Yukon, but we discuss the fact that we are ready to meet at any time if there are some changes in the budget. When we talk about the budget in, under Kathy's report, we'll see that clearly in today's paper, they said that there would be probably $178 million deficit already in next year's budget. So, we're going to have to make sure that we're on top of that, and we see how it affects us, as it did last year, when we had some of the grants that we expected didn't happen in the end. So, we'll talk more about that, but we're going to continue to meet with Yukon if there are any concerns that come up along the way. So, just to assure you of that. Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing to report.
Green Efforts.
While the Green Efforts Committee was forced to cancel its November's meetings, I want everybody to understand that we are moving forward with a couple of activities. First, we are planning to do a Farmington Cleanup Day in April, as we have for many years before this, and hope that everybody can participate in that. The second thing we've just begun to explore is the use of solar panels on municipal buildings to decrease the amount of cost for power. And that's in the very beginning stages, we are looking at it, you'll hear more about that in the future, but I want to make sure everybody knew that that is a plan that we're looking at, and we will be coming forward sometime next year with a plan.
Thanks, John. Joint Town of Farmington, City of Hartford Committee. Just that we, the City of Hartford has hired a consultant, Goem and York, to perform a redevelopment analysis to determine the best redevelopment options for the parcel, which is the 86-acre parcel on the other side of Patterson Road. So, we will keep you informed as that, as that process unfolds. Okay, Bike Committee.
So, we've been discussing a number of things in town relating to bicycle activity. One of the things which you probably all have noticed by now is that there's a beautiful bridge across Route 6, which will allow us to, or allow bicyclists to ride into the town of Plainville, and the town of Plainville is coming forth with a plan that will complete the bike path all the way down to New Haven. So both the completion of our, our part, which is probably going to be complete before the end of this month, there'll probably be a grand opening of the bridge delayed until the springtime, but it'll be open for bicyclists probably at the end of this month. The second thing we've been looking in, and other towns have taken advantage of this, is the use of signs to direct people to local services and local businesses at particular activities. So, for example, at the Red Oak Hill, before you head towards, head towards the trestle, there might be a sign there telling people how they can get to Farmington Center. In Unionville, there might be a sign that says, "Here's McDonald's coming in." So we're exploring the placement of signs so that people who are using the bike path know where our businesses are, where our services are, and allows them to get there on their bikes and further the use of the bike paths. So that's an activity which is, has been underway for a while, but you'll see probably next year, some more concrete activity in that area. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Gateway.
Nothing new to report on the Gateway.
Okay, Reporter, Council Chair and Liaisons, Chair Report. I have nothing, nothing more at this point to report. Board of Education.
Nothing to report.
Unionville, UVIA.
Yes, so the Jingle Bell Jubilee is happening on Saturday, December 2nd, from 4:00 to 6:00, and the Unionville Museum will be open. One thing to note is, in the past, the businesses have contributed decorated trees to the Unionville Museum, and to draw some new, new people in, the businesses this year will be doing gingerbread creations and, and no real rules, so it doesn't necessarily have to be houses, it could be anything. So, make sure you stop into the Unionville Museum on that day or at any other time in December. Also, along with the Jubilee crafts at the Congregational Church, the 5:30 Carol sing at the gazebo, and of course, it's all followed by a visit from Santa, sponsored by Tunksis Hoes. So, on your calendars.
Thank you. TPZ.
TPZ meets tomorrow night, so next month I'll give a report.
Okay, WPCA.
Nothing to report.
E, Economic Development.
Nothing to report.
Human Relations.
We are meeting tomorrow at our yearly meeting at New Horizons, which is, I highly encourage anyone to come visit. It tends to be a real opportunity for the residents of New Horizons to talk about their concerns within, you know, Farmington. Very often, we hear about snow's coming and no one shovels their sidewalks so they can't make it into Unionville at the center, but it's usually a really positive evening where they can, we can really tell them what's going on within the community and get their feedback, so we can make the community stronger, better for them. So that's tomorrow at 6:30 at, at New Horizons.
Thank you. Chamber.
Madam Chair, the Chambers was busy this month. They had business after-hours last week at Brookdale, hosted by Michael Collins. It's, that's the old gables. And then, the week before that, they held a candidate meet and greet at Tunksis, which was very well-attended, and it's a beautiful building, too. And, you know, the Chamber is, is really thriving. They're increasing their membership, their, their social after-hours are always very well-attended, and it's been exciting to watch it grow over the last couple of years.
Great.
That's my report.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay, Reporter, the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you, a few items. Meredith mentioned the Jingle Bell Jubilee. Also, the town council reception on December 12th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Prior to the regular town council meeting, there will be a short reception honoring the outgoing town council members. My next item is, I'm pleased to announce that we did hire a new Director of Fire and Rescue Services after an extensive recruitment process, and that is Stephen Hoffman, and he comes with a really significant background on both the career end and on the volunteer end. I think he's going to be a great match for my management team, and he will be, I will have him at one of the upcoming council meetings to introduce him to the town council. The State Budget Update. Representative D'Amico gave us some good news that we did have a positive outcome for the town of Farmington. That said, I am still very cautious about a few things. One is that what we saw in the paper today about the deficit, that is very, very significant. We do have some concerns still about mid-year cuts, so that we are watching closely. The other issue is, is that we have some issues with our renters rebate and our elderly circuit grants, which are smaller grants, but it looks like we may not be receiving those grants. So, on the positive note, the budget was finalized, and that was very good for the town of Farmington. As Mike had said, is that we expected a 30% reduction, we did receive a 5% reduction, so thank you for all your hard work. That, on the more negative side, is that I think the state still has some significant issues, and that we need to be, watch what's going on, and that any type of mid-year cuts, and I think next year, is going to be difficult. So, that's where we are right now, and I'll be giving another update in December to the town council.
Thank you, Kathy. And I just want to thank the council and Joe for the hard work all during this time, and of when we weren't sure what was happening with the budget, and just, we did have a freeze at, at one point. And it's just that they're so diligent about making sure everything is, what the numbers are, and what we need, and what we're doing, that Farmington is always in a good place. So I thank you for that, and in the council, we're always aware of what's going on, and you let us know what's happening as well. So, thank you, and we'll just continue to look and be careful, so. Any comments on Kathy's report?
I mean, only if there's anything that we can do not to be in the same place every year, I feel like all the years we've been on the council, because of, independent of this year, because of when the state officially is supposed to have their budget, and when we have their budget, we always have this uncertainty, and I don't know what, if anything, that future councils can do, but if we can eliminate some of the uncertainty, or do something to prevent this, because so much of what went down in the past six months was anxiety of what could happen, and I don't, I mean, I guess, looking forward, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but I hope that we remember, we have a memory here, and, and try to not be thus reliant, we do need the funds, but, you know, this is the same story every year, and this year was the worst of it. So, next, I guess next year, when people are putting together the budget, just keep this all in mind.
I think the one thing that we continue to do as a council and with Kathy and Joe is make sure that we are careful and we continue to rely less on what the grants are, so that if we don't get the money from the grants, we're not behind the eight ball, like some other towns have been. We're fortunate that we, we haven't relied on them as much anymore. Each year, we kind of wean ourself off a little bit more and more and more, so that we're not, we're just not so dependent on them. We're dependent more on ourselves, but... So that 25%, what is the actual, assuming it all actually makes it to us next year, what, what's the dollar amount of that 25% more than what we thought we'd get?
If you're just going budget to budget, it's, it's anywhere between $800 and $1 million. But, that said, with the elderly...
Oh, I know, I know, I got it. I, but I guess in the, in the perfect world, that we actually see that, it just goes to fund balance, and then we may have to tap into some fund balance some year.
All right, can I have a motion for the Town Manager's report?
I move to accept the November 14th Town Manager's report.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, Appointments.
I've got L2, I move that George Santos be appointed to the Building Code Board of Appeals for the balance of a five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any questions? Also, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
L9, I move that Jay O'Leary be appointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission for the balance of a five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2022. It's O apostrophe L-E-A-R-Y.
Second.
And Jay has an E.
It's Jay with an E, yes. J-A-Y-E.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
And last one is L17, I move that Jim Thompson be appointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority for the balance of a five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
L3, that Ned Statchen be appointed to the Building Code Board of Appeals for the balance of a five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2022.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
L4, that Guy Wolf be appointed to the Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2021.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
L6, that Ned Statchen be appointed to the Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission as an alternate for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2019.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
L8, that Daniel Kleiman be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for a balance of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2019.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
L10, that Mary Jane Parlow be appointed to the Farmington Valley Health District for the balance of a three-year term, beginning immediately and ending December 31st, 2019.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
L11, that Lisa Brizins be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for the balance of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2019.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you. Okay, old business. None. New business, one.
I move to accept Wisteria Lane as a town road from the intersection of Meadow Road, a distance of approximately 740 feet to its existing terminus.
Second.
The Town Planning and Zoning Commission approved this development as a town road. The developer has completed the public improvements, and the town staff has reviewed, and it has been approved by the town staff. We will be, the town will be holding a maintenance bond for one year from the date of acceptance.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Two.
I move to recommend acceptance of the donation of the proposed boathouse expansion from the Friends of Farmington Crew to the town of Farmington, valued at approximately $130,000.
Second.
Questions?
So, the Friends of Farmington Crew have a proposal to expand the existing boathouse by approximately 2,500 square feet, and we talked about it at the last meeting. I think Shannon's here and some of the Friends of the Farmington Crew people, which is kind of great with all the Eagle Scouts, all, all Crew people, and this is really wonderful. It's a vow, it's to accept a donation for approximately $130,000. The Inland Wetlands Commission approved the application, and the town zoning department completed its 8-24. It has support of the Farmington Board of Education, and Ms. Porter's, and the athletic director, and they've provided letters of support. The town council has to accept the donation per our donation policy, and I don't know if Shannon, if you wanted to introduce some people that were here, I know that they've...
That would be great.
Yes, or they can introduce themselves.
Yeah, I'll say, I'll introduce the president of Friends of Farmington Crew and the vice president, and the president is Deborah Burns, and the vice president is Jim Darling, and I've been working with both of them extensively, I've been working with their facilities and construction people as well, and it's been a very positive process, and they're certainly very well-organized and very enthusiastic. It's been really a pleasure to work with all of them.
Well, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the council, but behalf of the town and the kids. This effort, to begin with, a number of years ago, when it began, you know, before the Crew House even was built, was an amazing, what I call, regional efforts voluntarily, which is just wonderful. And it's really with the volunteers that we have in this community, that give themselves their time and energies and efforts again and again and again. I mean, this is, to me, what makes Farmington Farmington, and we can't thank you enough, because this is long-lasting. You know, five years from now, 10 years from now, we see now the Crew House when, when it began, I mean, it was just an amazing endeavor for both us and Ms. Porter's, and it just continues to grow and thrive. And I am amazed at how many kids are involved in Crew. It's just, just amazing, and it's wonderful, and they're going on to school and being, participating in Crew in many different schools all around. So, it really is wonderful, and we can't thank you enough. Thank you, Shannon, too. So, that said, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. Okay, three.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign the revised Farmington Boathouse lease amendment with the Friends of Farmington Crew and Ms. Porter's School Incorporated on behalf of the town of Farmington.
Second.
If you remember from last month, we talked about that there is a lease between all entities, and we just had to revise it. all entities, and we just had to revise it. So, we tried to just make us some simple revisions, and that is attached.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, great. Thank you again. Okay, and four.
I move to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreements, supervisor and non-supervisor, between the town of Farmington and local 2001 CSEA/SEIU for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Kathy?
This motion covers both supervisors and non-supervisors collective bargaining agreements. These groups represent the town's division directors and other supervisors and professional staff. There are a total of 22 members in both units. The tentative agreement for a one-year contract that began, would begin on July 1st, 2017, retroactively to June 30th, 2018. The highlights of the agreement include a wage adjustment of 2.25%, and the total cost of the contract is $39,800. This unit represents our highest, our higher-level managers. The contract essentially covers the basic working conditions of the unit. At this time, there was really not a need for substantial changes in the contract. While this contract could be viewed as a status quo agreement, the one-year contract term is positive for the town. A one-year contract places SEIU in line to negotiate with our larger groups, ASME and IBPO. We have proposed a one-year contract term to assist the town in planning benefit proposals that would be better negotiated town-wide. Also, with the uncertainty of the state in recent months, we did not want to tie the hands in a long-term contract. So, I think this is very positive for the town of Farmington.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Go ahead, John.
So, I'm assuming that the union is fine with a one-year extension?
Yes, they ratified, yeah. Other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, five.
I move to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the town of Farmington and local 3103 International Association of Firefighters for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
This motion covers our IAFF collective bargaining agreement. This group represents the town's eight career firefighters. The career firefighters supplement the volunteer fire department personnel, covering the firehouses from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's, again, the same as the last motion, it would be a 2.25% cost of living adjustment, and the contract cost is $11,378. And the firefighters have also said okay to this, too.
So, this is going to put negotiations from a whole bunch of unions to be, needing to be done before the middle of next year?
Yes.
And so, and we're comfortable with that can be moved forward, even though there's a great number more people involved?
It's going, it's going to be all hands on deck, but I think it's, we're in, I think it's, the time is right, and with our benefits, and having them all be negotiated at the same time. And then, I think from that point forward, depending on how things go, we'll split them up again, just because of the workload of doing all five at one time.
Okay, so what you're trying to do is to get them all in sync, and then you'll take them out of sync in terms of the schedule?
Exactly.
But at least they'll have a starting point that's the same?
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, six.
And I move to approve the property tax refunds, as shown on Agenda Item N6.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Is there an executive question?
No.
No.
But before we do that, I apologize, we did not mention the Town Manager's quarterly reports, and there's so much work that goes into these. This was under Kathy's report, which we did, we moved forward. But this can't go without a comment, that the quarterly reports were put together by Kathy, and if you have any questions, please ask Kathy, but the Town Manager goes through all of the strategic plan and all of our goals, and this is a time where she puts together where we are in all of these, in these goals. So, I just want to say it's a great job. It keeps us up to date and informed about what's going on, all in a nutshell. So, if there are any questions?
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Okay, then I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.